Thank you, Mr. Bostick. Do we have a second?
I'll say.
Thank you, Mr. Ball. All in favor? Would you read the certification for executive session for November the 4th?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Chairman, I'm going to certify that's the best of our knowledge on public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and only such public business matters as were indicated in the motion to go into executive session or heard discussed, considered executive session.
Mr. Sacagawea?
Yes.
Mr. Bostick?
Yes.
Mr. Ball?
Yes.
Mr. Gibson?
Yes.
Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
And Ms. Garrett?
Yes.
And myself? Yes. Okay, we'll stand for the pledge of Mr. Sacagawea.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Delegations, Dr. Brown?
Let's break. How many guys would be thankful for the opportunity to be out tonight? We just thank you for the audience here and the board members and their collective desire to do what is best for Russell County schools. We ask that you give this board the wisdom of Solomon to make the correct decisions and the courage of David to stand up for what is right. We just keep giving all the praise and glory in Christ's name, amen.
Anyone else want to speak? Is this a public comment, sir?
Yes.
Yes. I'm trying to stand up.
Okay, alright.
Our members of the board, thank you for making time for the delegation speeches and the moment of prayer. Appreciate that. A couple things, and hopefully you all can answer this tonight. I'm assuming that Virginia is a member of the National School Board Association. What I would like to see this board do is write a letter to our state school board requesting that Virginia leave the National School Board Association. And that request being in reference to the letter that they sent to President Biden asking that the FBI investigate parents for speaking up at school board meetings, listing them as domestic terrorists. It's absolutely unacceptable. Clearly, these people at the National School Board Association have an agenda, and that is to keep parents out of the classroom, to keep parents out of education. So I'd ask you to take a vote tonight and make a resolution to write that letter to our School Board Association of Virginia to request them to remove Virginia from that association. Three other states have already done it, Pennsylvania, Ohio, and I didn't make the notes, so I didn't get the other one. So the other thing I want to bring up is that at the school board meeting three months ago, Brad Hutchinson of the Fitz Turner Commission for Human and Civil Rights got up and spoke. He said that we weren't going to have any issues with transgender assaults in the bathroom. Our daughters were safe. That was three months ago. It was October, maybe September. It'd be like, what was that, July, August meeting? Well, on May 28th of last year, Scott Smith's daughter in Loudoun County was forcibly sodomized in the bathroom by a male student who wore a skirt to school. My question for this board is, how long before is one of our daughters or our grandchildren in Russell County schools before that happens? Make sure that you are doing everything in your power to make our bathrooms safe. My suggestion, make every single bathroom in Russell County a single-use bathroom, one person at a time. Until that happens, every single day, you on this board are liable for that to happen here. Every day that public school is in session, the risk is on every one of you. So take action, do something. Thirdly, the budget. I would like to see Russell County do a forensic audit of our school system. We spend almost and right at as much as all the counties around us, and yet we pay our teachers less. I'm talking about per student. We need to find out why we're spending as much money and what we can do better. Our taxpayers deserve it, our children deserve it. We need to make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kajner.
I haven't heard my phone. I'm not gonna lie. I moved just here because I wanted to talk about the absence policy. I moved here.
Would you care to give us your name and?
Oh, sorry. Yeah, my name is Cheryl Davis. I moved here four months ago from Washington State. I currently work at Castlewood High School. I'm not here as an employee, I'm here as a parent. My child, my son is in the elementary building, my daughter's in the middle school. He's in eighth grade. And I received a letter last week from the elementary building because my son has had six excused absences and two unexcused absences while I was gone. I had to fly back to Washington to get the rest of our belongings. And I was informed that if he had any more, even if I called and said that they were excused because he was sick or anything else like that, or, you know, missed a call, that we'd be looking at facing privacy. And so I'm trying to find out what's going on because we were told that if our children are sick, you know, if they show any signs of COVID, to keep them home. You know, and if it persists for more than two or three days, take them and get them tested. I have no problem with that. I will absolutely do that. But as a parent, I don't want to be facing privacy court because I'm trying to keep the rest of the kids in the school safe. Because I don't know if it's COVID. When I was put on quarantine because, you know, the volleyball players got, you know, exposed to COVID, and I actually ended up getting sick and actually ended up getting COVID, I went to four different locations to get a test. Four. And every single one of those locations said, "You're not showing any symptoms? We're not going to test you. It's a waste of a test." I was turned away. Not just here in Virginia, I even went to Tennessee. So I'm just trying to figure out what we can do about that. I mean, I know I don't want to go to court just because I'm trying to keep other students safe, you know, keep my babies safe. And I know that other parents don't want to be facing privacy court either. I mean, that goes on their permanent record. That's not just something that you just push under the rug. Oh, you know, privacy court, it's just another Tuesday. You know, so my concern here is that if we're going back to our old policies, then maybe that letter should have been sent out to inform parents when they switch back over to the old policies, you know, when it was pre-pandemic. All I've got really to say. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dr. Brown, any answers to that, Madam Chair?
Sure. Our privacy policy is well defined. It follows the requirements of the state of Virginia. But, you know, some of the things you said didn't quite fit as far as them being excused absences and so forth. We do have something called chronic absenteeism as a new player when it comes to the state of Virginia and students being in school. So that actually includes that. But if you will, I asked Mr. Fletcher to get your name and number, and we'll give you a call. He's the Assistant Superintendent, okay?
Yes.
And we'll give you a call, and we'll talk specifically about your child's situation, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anyone else want to address the board?
Okay, Dr. Brown, you have any adjustments to the agenda?
No, ma'am, sure.
Do we need approval for the agenda? Thank you, Mr. Bostick. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. Takes us down to the minute. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we need approval for minutes of October the 7th?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor? Dr. Brown, this takes us to our recognitions for tonight.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll start by asking Mr. Antonio Rice to come forward to speak to the board concerning our JAG program.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, everyone. And so this is, it's okay to take this off. This is always a fun, fun thing to do. Because this is kind of, you know, just like anything else, this is your report card. This tells you what you've been doing. You've invested in a JAG program. Here are the outcomes. Everybody sitting down? So let me just kind of re-discuss, it's important. It says, "Russell County Career and Technical Center has been recognized by our national affiliate Jobs for Americas graduates for exceeding all five of JAG standards for the follow-up class of 2020." Russell County Career and Technical Center was recognized at our Jobs for Americas graduate national training seminar earlier this year in July. And so what all this means is this. So let me just kind of just lay it out here for you. So you have 35 participants. The average barriers were about six. Forty-eight percent lives in a single parent or with a grandparent. Twelve percent low academic performance. Forty-nine percent did not pass state proficiency exam. Twenty-six have a past record of excessive absences. Twenty-nine have been suspended, expelled, or put on probation during high school. Twelve percent have repeated a grade in school. Seventy-one percent eligible for free or reduced lunch. Fifty-four percent have one or more parent who does not work. And then the biggest number is, 100% graduated. That's awesome. With those kind of barriers, 100% graduated. And so despite this academics, socioeconomic, COVID, and all that good stuff, 100% of the students in your JAG program graduated. And that's mainly because Sharon Owens said so. Because I think we all need a champion. We need somebody who believes in you. We need somebody who, who you have to not always say what they want to hear, but tell them what they need to hear. Be there for them, the shoulder, whatever, whatever it takes. You have a champion in Sharon Owens. And it's a pleasure to work with you on a regular basis, obviously. But you're the one that makes this program work, right? You're the foundation. It starts from you. So goes the leader, so goes the group. And so, and I'm sure you all have just been right next door. It's amazing what this stuff is coming and going on over there. And so actually, every time I come, I have to take pictures and all that good stuff because it's absolutely amazing. These kids are most certainly set up for what's next. And you have a large part to do with that. So if you just look at the chart here, you exceed even JBG standards. So 100% graduation rate, 89% employment rate, 100% full-time positive outcome rate, 97% further education rate, and 97% full-time employment rate. That's just outstanding. It just really is. And for the new guy, that makes me look good too, so keep up the good work, Sharon. Keep up the good work. That's all I really do have. And I will tell you this, coming down, is it 19? Right around 5:00 o'clock, it is the beautiful, it's, look, I think Charlottesville's pretty cool. You kind of, no one from Charlottesville, right? It's got its beat. It is absolutely stunning. It's absolutely beautiful.
You're riding out there.
Yeah, well, there you go. And so in coming from Charlottesville, I do, I'd be remiss if I didn't say, all the cars that had the hokey stickers on them, I beat them coming down. Almost got a ticket, but still, you gotta do what it takes, whatever it takes. So any questions about JBG and what you're doing and what's happening? And if you haven't been by there lately, go by and check out that facility. It's amazing. It's absolutely amazing.
Those instructors and, you know, hands down to all those instructors over there in the songs as well.
Absolutely.
Those students, when they graduate in the spring, that is a good, a good feel to be there, isn't it?
And I apologize. Typically, I have a big old plaque and all that good stuff. Everything's backed up. I have no plaques.
It's probably offshore stuff.
It's probably sitting off the coast. That's exactly what's happening.
They don't make their own over there.
Yeah, for sure.
As a matter of fact, I think the the problem fears tonight.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
I think I'm back here as a huge support and then also my principal back here, so those two.
I always forget you guys, sorry.
Can we get a picture of the four?
Yeah.
Alright, alright. I'm going to have to borrow Mr. Fletcher first, okay? So give me just a couple seconds.
Want us to go out here?
Yeah, if you would, okay. Again, I think you just, just for a couple of minutes.
Yes, sir.
Alright. Madam Chair, with our recognition, we do have our Teacher of the Month and Support Staff of the Month. I ask Mr. Fletcher to help us with us today.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. Madam Chair and members of the board. It's a pleasure to bring to you tonight our October Employees of the Month. I'd like to ask Mr. Brian Keith Ray, Homeacre Elementary School, to come forward as the Support Employee of the Month. He's a long-term substitute there. And our Teacher of the Month is Mr. Chamber of Barnes. If you'd come forward. I'd like to read to you the recognition nomination form that came with him. First of all, Mr. Ray. This is Mr. Ray's first year teaching sixth grade math. He's been an exceptional coworker and a better teacher. He's always at school early preparing his lessons for the help of his students who may need extra help. I have twin daughters in the sixth grade, and they have recently been having quarantine due to COVID-19. Mr. Ray kept in touch with them through me and school and also answered any questions my girls had through emails, messages, or through his own, through his own phone, even after school hours. Since math has never been my daughter's favorite subject, she often struggles in that area. This year, Mr. Ray has brought everything down to her level and made it much more understanding for her. When she seems to struggle, Mr. Ray will always touch base with me to check on her and make sure she's understanding the material and even go back over things with her. He goes above and beyond for each of his students. I have seen firsthand how he wants each child to understand and excel. I just want you all to know what an excellent decision was made in hiring Mr. Ray for sixth grade math.
Yay, he's done it.
Congratulations.
Fine.
By the way, he's working on his teaching license. Alright, Mr. Barnes is band director in Homeacre into the county. We've got three nominations for him. First one, he goes out of his way, out of his pocket, to make sure every student has the same opportunity. He finds the good in all kids. He deserves this more than any teacher I know. My daughter is a senior, and this has been, and has been his student for six years now. Please give this to this outstanding man. Second one, he truly goes above and beyond more than any teacher I have ever seen. Every child is vital to this program, and he makes them aware of how important they are. He often uses, uses his own money to have instruments repaired so that any student wishing to participate doesn't have to pay and are never excluded. He stays after normal hours and sometimes on weekends as well. He is so deserving of this award. My son was introduced to band by Mr. Barnes in the fall of 2019. I was going through cancer treatments at the time, and he really took Aiden under his wing. We had just purchased Aiden's saxophone around December, January, and then COVID shut everything down in March. Mr. Barnes still continued to teach Aiden virtually, not an easy task. He allowed him to progress at his own pace through his band books to where Aiden was in the third book by the time school started in the fall of 2020. He was so far ahead, Mr. Barnes introduced him to a second instrument, the trombone. He invited him to play at the home football games with the high school band and encouraged him to come to Homeacre High School and at after-school practices. He did this with others as well. My son, who is becoming so despondent, has flourished under his instruction. Not just in band class, but today as an eighth grade student, he can play multiple instruments. Mr. Barnes' love and dedication to all students has spilled over into their daily lives, their other classes, their self-confidence, their pride in their school and community. These children are thriving despite all that is wrong in today's world. Mr. Barnes is their cheerleader and a safe place for many. He radiates positivity and encouragement. He pays out of his own pocket for what he thinks the students need. It's also a real blessing to us parents. We know how special this man is. We are honored to have him so involved in our children's lives. I nominate him not just the Teacher of the Month, but Teacher of the Year.
I think that's good for us. We had an opportunity to look at the field. Motion that we pay the bills? Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. All in favor? Everybody good with paying the bills? Dr. Brown, our resignations and retirements?
Yes, Madam Chair. I have a small list for the board's consideration tonight.
Do we have a motion that we approve?
Madam Chair, I'll make the motion to approve the resignations and retirements presented.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. Do we have a second?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Do you hire Dr. Brown?
Yes, Madam Chair. Again, I have a list for the board's consideration.
Okay, do we have a motion that we move personnel and transfers?
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Bostick. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. All in favor? Aye. Dr. Brown, the second reading of the policies?
Yes, Madam Chair. We have one action item and one information item for the board's consideration tonight. On the action item, the members of the VSB, the Virginia School Board Association, Russell County Public Schools receives VSB policy updates to be examined by our school board members for implementation to our policy manual. The policies under consideration can be seen under the Policy tab on Board Docs. This was presented last board meeting as an information item, and I have it tonight with the board's approval.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'm making a motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Do we have a second?
I'll second that, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Sacagawea. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Dr. Brown, do you have the corona virus update?
Yes, Madam Chair. A few items for board's information tonight. The booster clinic for our adults is underway. It was at Homeacre High School today. There'll be at Leavenworth High School on the 18th and Castlewood High School on the 19th for our adults. Again, that is a booster clinic, so they'll have the choice of whatever vaccine they would like there. Again, we feel that we'll have, you know, again, a nice turnout for them and compare what we dealt with back in February as the, you know, the booster is widely available now at any pharmacy and most doctor's offices and so forth. But we are preparing, providing that service for our employees. Additionally, we have the Pfizer vaccine clinic for our students ages five to 11. That has been approved for emergency authorization. And we are working with the Health Department. This information is posted on our website and Facebook page. As far as the clinics and so forth, those will be on the 17th and the 19th. And again, any information that, you know, folks need, it's available on our Facebook page. And of course, they can call, and we'll provide that information as well, as can share on all calls by the principals. As far as our notifications that we receive, we do receive a scorecard from Valid every day. And our numbers, again, are improving as far as the number of individuals that are in our hospitals in our area. Not too long ago, five, five weeks ago, we were looking at, you know, again, a new high, up to 413 that were in the hospitals. With the information we received today, it's down to 166. So that's, that's encouraging. Individuals within the school division, I have provided that information to the board. With our last board meeting, again, we had students quarantined, 181. That's down to 33. These are active, currently active. Last month, students testing positive and currently, again, active with that, was 40. We're down to eight. And at this point in time, we have no staff quarantined or have tested positive that are active for today. So we're encouraged, and we are in weekly contact with the VDH and hopefully moving in the right direction with making things closer and closer and closer to normal. That's what I have tonight, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Brown, for that update.
Madam Chair, Dr. Brown's talking about the coronavirus being down. I'd like to make the motion that we make masks optional. If the parents want some of the worms, they can, and I don't think it should be. I mean, they, it should be made optional.
Madam Chair, I thought we already discussed this in the back room. We've decided to vote.
I think the attorney was going to be looking at that Senate 1303 bill. And I would hate to do anything at this point to take. It's not in seconds, sir.
I mean, with the election, 100% agree, and it's going in that direction. Will we get Mr. Compton to read that deal? I would definitely, I would expect next month to be making that motion, passing it. How?
Well, you read it, Albert. What do you think?
Didn't have the full bill that I could get online. I'm going to have to throw back and put the full bill and review it. The portion that didn't reopen, Dr. Brown, if you could, it would be better if, maybe we have an opportunity to research on.
Yes, there's motion.
All right, so we got the motion table. Is there a second on the motion to tell Mike?
I do. I appreciate that the motion has been tabled with Mr. Paul's second, so.
You need a vote?
And we need a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Parsons. You know, we, we want to come through this thing as, as quickly as we can and we want to stay with, within our boundaries as much as, you know, that we can too.
I agree, Madam Chair, but with your governor, I don't think we go away for the CDC directors want to do it for VDH. Like, whether you, you go to the field and do that for us, we need to go off. I mean, I'm not going to wait on VDH, that you know, we're not bound to. That's how I view it. I think I'd like to have any company to, predate and then give us a pardon.
I would say, I can't vote for something the way it is right now, but it's, we listen to you or us individually until, until he signs off on it or she signs off on it anymore.
That's what I say.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Brown, our sales tax is $376,337.84. ADM, that's $32.64. Have a chance for the maintenance and expenditure report. We have future agenda items.
In reference to his speak about the association.
Yes.
We might need to look into, to that, but we did receive something from our association.
We did from Gina Patterson.
Said that, you know, they didn't support that.
Did not support that.
That would mean that we're still not a member of it, but they were a part of, a lucky national about to consider.
And then we did forward as well, didn't we, that to.
So we've already fought forward something about that.
Yes.
I agree with you.
But it may not be as strong as what, what might be.
I think we need to do that. I mean, I think we do need to, if, I might motion if we do send a letter to the VSB. We don't want to be a part of the National School Board Association.
I'll stick with that.
Well, we're having our convention, but that'd be all your counties in the state of Virginia, November the 17th. And what is the date?
17th and 18th.
17th and 18th. And I think that would be a good discussion that we as a board talk with our other, other board members across the state and.
I think the board may proceed that we did this action, so then they call you just like the transgender issue and just like the sporting issue last year, we were the first to act.
Right.
The ground of the sporting, if we had done that, we'd have asked for assistance. I mean, there's motion on the floor. I have a second.
You speak for Russell County. Speak now.
Madam Chair, we have an audience that's speaking out of turn. I don't think they should be doing that. If they're going to speak from the back room, I think they need to be escorted out of the room.
Should we do a round call vote?
I have, how about discussion?
Yes, let's have discussion.
I have no problem doing it. I just think we need to, I agree with you on your feeling, but we need to wait until this next board meeting. I don't think 30 days is going to make that much difference.
Well, it's lesser than 30 days, it's.
Yes, less than 30 days.
Right.
But it'd be 30 days before we come back.
Right.
I'm thinking, in my little finite mind, that something may come down even, we may not even have to.
I, I think we may not have to act. I think there's enough heat being pressured in other places that.
That, yeah, I think it may come.
This will be the heat.
Yeah, us going with it.
You know, if they don't know that, we're upset, I mean, for.
Well, this board has.
The organization that was sent over later, the whole parents in here deemed as terror, domestic terrorism, we don't want no part of it.
Well, this board has never, as long as I've been on the board, has never tried to sanction any parent that, that comes before us for what, any reason.
Well, it's.
We tried to.
See, that's the FBI now, you know, that's, that's a federal issue. I mean, we don't.
Well, we, we take a stand on it.
I don't, I call for a vote. I call for a vote, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Seguita.
I'm with the chairman and Mr. Bostick. I'll vote no in lieu of our upcoming convention and see what comes out of that.
To Mr. Paul.
I'm, I'm with Mr. Z. I'm, I'm, I am for doing it, but I would like to wait 30 days.
Okay.
So I'm above that.
Okay. Mr. Parsons?
Yes.
Ms. Garrett? And myself, no. Okay, what else do we have to say? We don't need to adjourn later tonight because we will be reconvening for our virtual meeting with the 18th and 19th. Appreciate all of you.
Nice to be here.
We're going to do it here, it might be virtual and.
Yeah, we'll, we'll set up the TV screens and so forth so the board can deal with the annual convention.
But we can interact with. That should present as savings of travel and all that and plus we can be here and learn about things that we need to be focusing on and let our points be known as well. Also, Dr. Brown, I think Homeacre Elementary, maybe next month you would have some information on that. I'm not familiar exactly. They were 146 out of 1,000 men's schools. What type of achievement did they? And that would be a reflection, I guess, on their teachers and their employees there.
Right, I've, I've been told that there's some information from the US News World Reports concerning that. I have not been notified from VSB or from the VDOE concerning any official recommendations. I'd be more than happy to investigate that.
That would be good and we'd like to vote. And I appreciate his music being here this evening and also his kids coming. And you're all welcome to speak to us at any time and all the other.
And we need to thank our family too.
Yes.
Madam Chair, I guess one additional point there, as far as our, I guess, future calendar items and the date of our next school board meeting is that's December the 2nd. We are going to have a public hearing prior to that for the FY '23 budget input, so we'll have that available to, to anyone that'd like to step forward and share that.
Okay.
And I want to thank our new council for being here.
Yes.
Thanks, Mr. Compton and Ms. Compton. I don't think we're real close relation, I mean, family tree wise, but we've known, known Gene and Dolly for a long time and we appreciate them filling those shoes. And also, thank you, Mr. Street. We really appreciate you coming to our meetings.
Yes, thank you.
I have one other thing.
Yes.
I would like to, Dr. Brown, to give the gentleman about his request there on the, our cost, things like that, to get his understanding of what he thinks he might, information that he, he might want that, that we can give him without having to get, what do you call it?
Audit.
Or somebody.
Their audit.
Yeah, because they're all audited.
Twice a year.
Yeah, to understand what, you know, what he's, what they've been trying to go into.
Sure.
It's all there, see? It's all, also online and everything's, everything's all right.
And in regards to the bathrooms, we clearly stated that as a male cannot go in a clean bathroom or vice versa in Russell County. If that issue happens, I mean, it's not, it's not going to happen. They, they are go to the administrator for single-use bathrooms. We clearly say that's not going to happen and also permanent use, that's not approved in Russell County. You are not. But also.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. And also, we have got estimates on changing the bathrooms in schools. It's going to cost about half a billion dollars, each bathroom to bring those up to.
Single-use.
Yeah, single-use type bathrooms. And so we, it's, when we said a million dollars for each, for each school, but for this system.
No, maybe the new.
And so things might change.
Administration may change, may, may change that in the course of time.
But it's not, it has been looked into, has been looked into a couple of months ago. It's always cost and also the, what it looks like. I missed, I missed seeing Reagan's lips back there and I thought she said relax.
That's not what I said.
What it looked, what it looked like, okay? I'll tell you right now.
I'll tell you afterwards what I said.
So we, we will adjourn, we'll just adjourn to.
Vote to continue your board meeting?
To continue our meeting on, for the.
17th.
17th.
Or excuse me, the 18th, Madam Chair?
The 18th.
18th.
You need a motion to continue?
No. And thanks, everyone, for coming to speak.